All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the study station for July 11th to order and ask the clerk for a roll call, please.
Sure, Director Brett Echols.
Here.
Vice Secretary Robert Uten.
Here.
Secretary Arthur Perry.
Here.
Vice President Arlene Schaefer. Here, President Michael Schaefer.
And I'm here as well, thank you. All right, public comments. Seeing anyone from the public here, do we have any written public comments or?
No, Mr. President.
Okay, then let's go, bless you, go to items of study and item one, receive and file the June code enforcement report, David.
Good morning, President Schaefer, members of the board. This report summarizes major points for three ordinance enforcement topics covering scavenging graffiti and trash container enforcement. For the month of June, the CMSD code enforcement officer focused his efforts on patrols in the various parts of the community. The goal is to identify and deter instances of scavenging and residential trash carts left within the public view. In the month of June, the district saw a number of complaints filed with CMSD code enforcement staff regarding scavenging activity in the city. As with most scavenging complaints, the alleged violations take place in their early morning hours. In order to address resident concerns, the code enforcement officer is patrolling the streets by 6:30 a.m. Included below are instances of scabbings that were detected by the off while the officer was investigating specific complaints. In the month of June, I've caught three scavengers in different areas of the city. One on Hamilton, San Ana Avenue and Persidio. The last page will show on the map those particular areas. Wednesdays, excuse me, Fridays, trash area, Tuesdays and Mondays. Any questions on that so far?
Questions for David? Bob, any question?
No, no thinking.
In the month of June, there were a few customer complaints reported to the district headquarters regarding trash carts in public view. The following a list of violations where trash cart violations were found and addressed by the courtesy notice process. In the month of June, I had 202 cases of violation notices written, listed by the streets and the number of violation notices written on that street. Any questions on that?
I do have a question and it has to do, and maybe this is the right time Scott, you can help me. The gentleman we talked to the other day about the heavy cart, is that part of, part of what David's talking about right now? With the written notices?
I didn't give him a written notice. I, we went out there and talked to him.
Yeah.
The Bowling Green gentleman.
I don't know, is that the street you did?
Yes.
Okay, but I'm just gonna throw this out. His, his little note was the yellow warning thing, but that was from the CRNR truck driver that wrote that, right?
Yes.
And the driver wrote, your cart's too heavy.
I believe. I never saw the violation notice that was left on the.
And it wasn't really a violation notice as much, it was just a handwritten note saying, I can't pick your card up, it's too heavy.
Yeah, he didn't provide us with that copy that day we went out there and I, you know, shifted his carts around and they weren't 250 pounds, so.
I guess, and we should have talked about this before and I apologize, how did the driver know it was so heavy? When he went to pick it up, does the arm give him some indication that?
I inquired about that and the answer to that is no. So they don't have any way of telling how much that cart weighs.
I mean, the citizen admitted it was too heavy. I mean, he did say that he felt it was.
We thought it was heavy, but it wasn't too heavy to lift. I mean,
Yeah.
That was obvious because when we told Sierra to come back to pick it up, they picked it up.
Yeah, that's true, huh? I didn't think about that.
And so I've been following up over there just to make sure that, you know, everything's getting taken care of at that particular address.
I just, after, after the contact with the resident, I, I got to think, how do, how do they really know? I mean, I could put concrete in mine. I, so, okay, so it's, it's a subjective thing on the.
And they did tell me that if, if, you know, they grab a heavy card and, and, you know, once they clamp and try to lift it, their truck will shift over, you know, and that's another indication that then that there's some weight in that cart.
Okay, I mean, that makes sense.
But at a certain point, I don't think their equipment can just pick up something and of course, that's gonna be a no pickup.
I appreciate it. Do you have a question, Brett?
Yeah, two questions, I think. Two oh two, without me going back and looking at all the previous reports, seems high, right?
Well, you know, I did transition now, I'm, you know, I'm out in the field all day now, so those numbers were gonna increase. And I think that's, you know, probably gonna be around the average. I mean,
Okay.
I'm not hitting every little side street, you know, it's impossible for me. But I'm gonna be, you know, like, this is probably gonna be a normal thing is.
Got it. And then on a couple of the, it looks like the favorite streets, say Anaheim and Eldon, going down the list, I mean, Joanne, I mean, some high, high warning notices out, any particular reason on those streets or just?
I'm not sure why, and you know what, I'm just gonna follow up and eventually we'll get compliance. I mean, they're, they're, you know, seeing these violation notices and some people are calling in and I'm explaining to them and some other people are, they're following of the orders after, you know, a notice is left.
And then out of those two oh two, just roughly, how many are called in versus what you're seeing out there on your patrols? I mean, is it 20% half, any idea?
I, I think I got like two emails about trash carts in public view last month. And so, you know, I addressed those right away, but
Got it.
I also make mental notes and we'll follow up at those locations as well.
Awesome. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Um, it's interesting, it generally is the same, and we've talked about this at the night, it's generally the same, same streets, the same people.
Yeah.
Just a question like that.
We're thinking alike, there you go.
Yeah, any other questions or any concerns for David?
Just one question maybe, is 250 pounds the max? I mean, is that in writing?
Yes, it's, it's in writing, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Have we ever had anybody go over 250 that we know about? With the construction thing?
Yes, there, there was one particular incident, Nivela investigated, I don't remember the location, but the person did put a lot of construction material in there and after we advised him, he did comply and take it out, but there was, I remember there was one incident where.
Remember, he had full on building.
Yeah, it was all construction, yeah. He should, he should have rented a bin, not put it in the cart.
Better than dumping it down the sewer drain.
That's right, I was gonna say that. Or in a parking lot.
Or in a parking lot somewhere. Thank you, David, very much. Okay, smart covers?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This was, item was requested by the board to be placed on, on the agenda to talk about our, our smart cover technology. This is the technology that we use to monitor our wastewater flow. It's a technology that, that we, we strategically place throughout the system, particularly in areas that we experience high water and the smart, what's the unique features about the smart covers i- is that it monitors the wastewater flow 24 hours a day. And we will set a level when the water is supposed to, a certain level for the water, water level, and when it reaches that level, we will get a text message on our, on our phones. And so that'll give staff time to go and investigate. And if it was a clog, then we can respond and avoid any kind of sewer response. It's a very effective program. I'm gonna turn it over to Steve Conno or Waste Water Maintenance Superintendent, he's gonna go into more details on how he uses the system. And we could talk about if there's any other locations you might wanna, we might wanna put on the smart covers, but as of now, it's definitely very effective program for us. And it's costing us about $22,000 a year for these programs, $22,000 a year. So there's a fee for each, each device, but they go underneath the manhole cover. And also we have it on a few wet wells, pump stations as well. I'm gonna turn it over to, to Steve and he's gonna pour information on how we use the system.
All right, so what are they, like Scott was saying, they're kind of sensors we use at our pump stations. So at our pump stations, we have them installed under our wet well doors. We also have them some in our sewer system pipes, like an Indus, siphon. And there's this early detection, if we see a rise in the water levels, we will get alerts and all the crew, we have it all on our smartphone also. So what we do will get a text if we see a rise in level. And we automatically respond to the ones that are in the sewer systems. And the ones at the stations, we have a little time, but ones at the stations, they're used for redundancy. So if we do receive a smart cover alert at a station, we should also be receiving a SCADA also, it's redundancy. So that's what we use to detect SSOs, so we can prevent those. So we, we have 14 currently, so there's the map of all ours. So green is good, that means they're all operating. We look at the top five. If we see red triangle means alarms off. Blue or orange is probably the issue, like antenna could be damaged or other issues, maybe the low batteries, so it'll let us know. So we monitor this daily to see if everything's running up. So we've been using them since 2012. And during that time, we received 1,347 high level alarms. And some of them have saved us, especially on siphons and Indus 16th Street. But a lot of these alarms also, because we exercise our Godwins every Friday, so that automatically sets these off. Also, we test them regularly too, so that's that 1,300 times. So like Scott said, they are monitored by satellite 24/7, everything's live, so I can click on a station. So go to Eldon. So once it pops up, we can view a chart and it'll show the flows of that. So this was probably on a Friday. Up here are the levels, so if it hits red, that's the alarm, so that's probably a Friday, what is it? Put the date on that, 7/8. Okay, so as a Friday, that's why it went up, because we're testing the Godwins. There's a lot of stuff we, we use in here. We can set the different levels, Tony will do this, or we have smart cover come in because these sensors can be moved to different locations if we need to. Like the ones in the sewer system, we can move them to another spot if we need to. Alarm settings, if we need to work on a station, we could shut it off for a certain amount of time if we need to. Maintenance carries a history of, for this station of what they've come and done. If we do get emails from smart cover saying there's issue, like a low battery, it's not connecting, I'll email smart cover and they'll come out and fix it. And when they do, they'll keep record and it shows in right here. That's basically the website, but it saved us a lot and a lot of other agencies use smart covers, they're based out of San Diego. We've tried another company, Mission, it was a similar system, but they use floats. With smart cover, it uses like, kinda like a transducer where it senses the level pressure. So we decided to just start with smart, keep smart covers. Any questions?
Can you, Steve, if you don't mind, see right in the middle, where's this water level above bottom? And those numbers, that two in red and one in green, can you tell me what that, what that means?
Okay, so each station will be different, you know, the wells are different depths. So when it hits the sensor between the sensor and the water level is 114 inches. Well, when it hits 114 inches, it'll set an alarm to us.
114 inches from the level to the sensor?
Yes.
Okay.
Now there's somewhere in this site, it shows each station and it shows the different levels. It shows like a little diagram of where they're at, so each station will be different.
Is this the one we keep an eye on the most?
Eldon, mostly Indus and.
Indus, okay.
Yeah.
Couple of questions.
Yeah.
Go ahead. If, if you have a low batteries, do they have to come out, come from San Diego to fix it?
Yes.
You don't, we can't fix it.
They have to come do it, and they're pretty good on responding pretty quick.
And then the one at 16th Street, whereabouts is that located, on the west side of town?
On 16, it'll be on the, let me see. Yeah.
Probably was.
16th, huh?
That's the border of 16th from Newport and.
Yes. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we have 14 now, is that sufficient?
We've started, probably just at our stations when we started this for redundancy, then we started having spills. So we started setting them to show the state water board, we're doing this to, you know, prevent future spills. So if we do find trouble spots, you know, the crew will let me know and then we can decide if we need to set another one out there.
And then we say about 21 a year? Twenty, and so I assume that's for the purchase of the hardware and then ongoing maintenance, is that?
Monitoring.
And then how often do you need to replace out the hardware itself out of those 14?
Yeah, probably every five years they'll come out, start changing stuff. A lot of the things that come out for maybe like damaged antennas, you know, people will vandalize them, they'll kick them.
Ah, okay.
Like, they're like green reflectors, you know, like you see out on the street. That's the common one, people just kick them or damage them.
These are, these are the texts you don't want at 2:00 in the morning, basically, but it's useful to have because.
Better to have this.
Right, exactly.
Saying, hey, there's sewer flow down this street.
Exactly. Now, great stuff, so, sounds great, thank you, Steve.
Congratulations, you finally, every one of us has said that same question over the years, I mean, to me, this is, for $22,000 a year, I'll take this. And yeah, I know he's, I know he's trying to talk, that's why I'm.
Just keep him muted, it won't.
Director, did you have a comment?
Well, I wanted to know with Steve, are these attachable to the composite manhole covers?
Yes, we have a few, like the one, this is on a composite manhole.
Okay, so, and are the manhole covers marked so that when staff need to open them, open the manhole, remove, remove, remove the cover, they know it's there?
Yeah, we only have a few, so there's what, Indus and 16th, and there's the antennas on top, there's a green reflector.
So, so they'll know it, they'll, they'll know not to remove the manhole cover in a way that would damage the hardware.
Yeah, they know how to take them off and they know how to, because you gotta put them on a certain spot also, there's a couple of etchings we have to match up, so they get a sat- satellite signal.
Okay, okay, no, this is a very good technology. I, I appreciate your, your explanation.
No problem.
Thank you, sir. To me, again, this is such a proactive thing that we do with this, I, I think. Any idea how widely used in other districts and other areas is this system?
A lot of agencies use these.
Okay, maybe not the city of LA, but.
200 of these.
Really? Okay.
Well, yeah, Stephen, and follow up to that question. You know, when we were researching this technology, there are agencies that just have them everywhere in their system. And, and yeah, we, we have, we have 16, if we'd had one in, in the pump station, the Irvine pump station, you know, when we had the spill, that would have saved us, you know, a ton of money. Anyway, great technology.
All right, anything else for Steve? Thanks for taking the time this morning, we, we all appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Item three, public outreach overview?
Thank you, Mr. President, so very pleased to, to our media metrics for our social media. I can say since, I think the last five years, I think we've, our, our public outreach has, has gone, has done tremendous efforts of reaching our, reaching the public, I mean, comparing where we are five years ago today is almost like, it's like night and day. And how we reach our, the publics and the different mechanism we use to reach our public. And it's a struggle because a lot of people still, to this day, believe it or not, don't know we exist. And that's always the struggle we have, you know, they still think the city provides the trash collection or does the sewer, saying, no, we're a separate entity, we're different, you know, and here's the programs we provide. But Nalani and her team is doing an outstanding job of getting the word out to, to our public and, and you'll see it in the metrics. I think that'll demonstrate to you how successful they've been. And we're continuing to evolve on this program, in fact, just recently, even I heard about the new meta thread that's out there, so it's like, you know, that might be another way of reaching out to people, so we're looking into that, right? So there's always new ways of, of looking at how we can reach, reach the public. So I'm gonna turn it over to Angela, she's, she prepared this fantastic report for you and she's gonna share with you the metrics that our team have been performing on getting the word out to our public, so. Ready to go, so, all right.
Good morning, President Schaefer and Board of Directors. Today I'll be presenting an overview of our public outreach efforts and we'll be highlighting a few of our social media performance metrics. To begin, next slide please.
Kind of shared on.
I want to share with you our six social media platforms. The district has a Twitter page, Facebook page and Instagram. These three sites, these three sites are heavily used by our public outreach team to share our awareness campaigns and our district-wide information. So these are what all of our pages look like, just as a screen grab. We also have a LinkedIn page, YouTube and Nextdoor. LinkedIn is great for posting job announcements and district awards. Used to, YouTube hosts all of our meeting videos and PSA videos. And earlier this year, the district was granted free access to Nextdoor. For this platform, we're able to send direct messages to certain areas of our service area. And these areas can be based on our trash routes or select neighborhoods. So as you can see, the district's social media following has been growing each year. This has been a result of the district's increased presence online and assistance from our communications consultant, Tripeppy Smith. I would like to point out that this graph does not include data from Nextdoor. So Nextdoor doesn't operate like other platforms and there's no follow feature on this site. The district's Nextdoor audience consists of 46,690 members, which is based on zip code data and our service maps. And here are some of our reoccurring public outreach topics. The district's social media content mainly focuses on SB 1383 and organics recycling, wastewater and trash tips, staff highlights, you can go to the next slide, staff highlights, special trash notices such as service delays. And then we also like to share relative information posted by partner agencies such as the city of Costa Mesa's Dump Day. Okay. Now this graph represents our posting frequency over the last three and a half years. On average, the district publishes one social media post every other day. The key to maintaining and growing our online presence is through posting and monetarily boosting our information. As for other outreach, we also do mailings, so as you see here, these are just three of our mailers that we did this year. For the middle one, the compost giveaway event, we coordinated with Mesa Water to distribute our mailer. And we plan on having more mailers next year as we continue to ramp up on SB 1383 and the three cart rollout. And as you know, we also do our seasonal newsletter, which is written by district staff. And we have our sustainability star program. I want to share that this highlight resident, this program highlights residents for practicing and exemplifying sustainability in their everyday lives. Each quarter, the district selects a sustainability star and awards them with a prize. The resident is then featured in the district's newsletter and on social media. And these stars can be selected in one of two ways, either through the cart-to-cart outreach program with CRNR or through community nominations. Next up, we have our SB 1383 videos that were shared on YouTube and Facebook. These videos were produced by Tripeppy Smith and they performed very well. So we had a view rate of about 31%, which is 5% higher than the average view rate of other government-related apps. And as a result of these videos, we received over 500 website visits in April 2023. And from those website visits, we noticed significant increases in kitchen pail requests and trash service requests such as large item pickups, replacement carts and hazardous waste pickups. Another form of outreach we have is email. The district averages 72 emails per year. And our topics focus on meetings, special press releases, trash updates, our events and SB 1383. Our current audience has 6,213 contacts. We obtain email addresses by extracting them from customer service requests, our website forms and through signup sheets at our events. I would like to note that we use an email service called MailChimp. And MailChimp's user policy explicitly prohibits the use of purchased email lists. If we upload a purchased email list, it would suspend our account and prevent us from sending out email communications. And lastly, I'll be going over some of our performance metrics. Since 2020, our overall growth in social media followers, email subscribers and go CMSD accounts have increased. This growth is a result of Tripeppy Smith and district staff's commitment to producing effective outreach and exploring new methods for engaging with our customers. And this growth then translates to tangible results. So more and more customers are contacting the district for kitchen pails via email. They're using our Go CMSD app to schedule service requests with CRNR and they're visiting our website via our social media platforms. So what's to come? So for the remainder of the year, we have a few more events in our schedule. Starting tonight will be at Conscious in the Park. We plan on participating in the coastal cleanup event in September and will be hosting our Eco Expo in October. We're also in the process of planning the three cart rollout with Tripeppy Smith. The plan consists of five town hall meetings, seven mailings, four video campaigns, 20 plus social media posts and the design of new trash cart hangars for next year. This completes my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Fantastic, thank you.
Yeah.
Very good. Yes, ma'am.
I had some comments. First of all, that was a good report. Second of all, on the kitchen pails. I, you know, I think we're being so successful in having it at events because I've been at the events and, and people are not aware. It's amazing how many people are not aware and our staff is taking the time and explaining it all to them and, and I think that's a great tool to have them at the events like that. Also, on the Nextdoor that you have, how many Nextdoors do you have and how do you get them?
So we just have one account and the way it works is when a user signs up, they put in their zip code. And so it'll tailor any information relative to that zip code to. And so it'll tailor any information relative to that zip code to that, to that user. So when they put in, I think we have three main zip codes in our service area. And then you also put in your address. So say we have, um, certain trash issues on a specific neighborhood on the west side. We can just shout out the message to those people that are affected. Or if we have something that's affecting the whole area, we can shout it out to the entire area. So it's really effective.
That's another great tool.
Yeah.
You know, thank you.
I was on Nextdoor and.
Good God, why?
I know. I don't do anymore because I really don't care about the neighbor's cat having symptoms. But, um, do you guys find Nextdoor effective?
We just started using it this year. We get some feedback. Um, people will comment on our posts. But it's just another platform we want to be on, make sure people see us. I think people get email notifications if they don't have the app open. So if they do see something and they're curious about trash, they can check that notification.
I, I don't have a problem with, with this. I really don't. It was a little cumbersome, a little overwhelming for my simple brain. And, uh, I'm glad to hear that it is working. So.
Yeah, I think Nextdoor is very effective, especially when we have delays in services and we can, we can.
Yeah.
On that particular neighborhood and hit that neighborhood rather than do a broad, um, district-wide email, we could just hit that particular neighborhood. That's where that comes in.
I think the people that are on Nextdoor religiously use a lot.
Yep.
I know the, the wine group in our neighborhood. Brett, off then.
I just want to say one more thing. Um, on the living green, that last one was perfect. I just thought it was so successful.
Thank you.
I had phone calls from it.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Asking question, um, you know, and I had to pick it up and look at what they're talking about because I couldn't believe that they're really getting into it. That's great.
You're good. All right. Uh, so a few questions. Uh, how, I noticed of the graphs, the posts and the emails are down this year fairly significant. What's the reason for that?
I think it's just we're halfway through the year. So, um, and then when we have events, we ramp up a lot. So the Eco Expo there, it'll jump our numbers up once we.
Thank, thank you for that. And then, uh, how long are, uh, on average, the users engaged on would pick a platform? Do we have that metric from, uh, Tripepe?
Like how long they're on the app?
Or app, Twitter, Facebook, Insta?
Um, we could ask for that data.
Uh, that would be very important.
I think they have, um, through Google Analytics, we can check on how long people are on our website and what pages they frequent the most. So the whole point of the platforms is to then get people on our website.
And then, um, and then another thing is out of the various platforms, I mean, I see obviously our numbers have risen to, I don't know, call it 2,500 with all the things. How many individual accounts versus, uh, duplicate accounts on that? Cause out of 2,500, is that really 2,500 individual users or is it?
It'll be, it's a combination of, uh, customers, um, other agencies following us. Um, I'm not sure about duplicate, duplicate accounts. I'll see if Tripepe can.
I would like, I'd like to see that pull up because for instance, let's say, and I don't, but let's say I have a Twitter, a Facebook and an Insta. And I'm on all three for whatever reason with our district. I'd like to know what those numbers are.
Oh, yes.
You know, um, and then, um.
I think that information's also in the performance metrics report that'll be at the board meeting then of this month.
Very cool. And then, um, the other questions or comments I had, I mean, it, and it makes sense in my brain. Most under 40 are on Insta and Twitter, most over 40 are, you know, Facebook and, and email and all that. So it makes sense. Most of our residents who are going to be actively engaged with us probably, probably are in the over 40 crowd, maybe. Uh, the app to me is the most important thing we have. Uh, for users, for ease of use, blah, blah, blah. I mean, Twitter and Facebook and Insta, for instance, has grown, but.
Right.
Not, not a whole lot. And then obviously email has grown. So just kind of curious from Tripepe and what, what their plans to, I mean, 2,500 or thereabouts isn't a huge social media follower. I'm not expecting Kardashian, but I just want to see what the next steps are because knowing that our numbers show that most people are using our app and email. Our growth in social is good, but how can it be better or does it need to be better? Just some report from Tripepe would help on that deal.
I will say after the four PSA videos from SB 323, the emails and the go CMSD accounts skyrocketed. So those, those YouTube videos are very successful in getting people to realize what our services are and what they can schedule through the app.
And then, uh, to really, uh, grow these things, I suggest, you know, TikTok and Scott does a viral dance that just blows up. And then all of a sudden, 2,500 turns into 5,000 real quick.
I'm taking notes.
I'm not sure about that.
Great idea. I support it.
There you go. But thank you for the information and maybe we can just get a few things from Tripepe, especially what we're doing next. Because now we've got, uh, like I said, Scott, a, a thread and whatever else is, I mean, there's always something coming. So, um, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, good question with Malani. Tonight, what's your plan for giveaways?
We have several giveaways and I believe that they are the grocery bags, do we have fat choppers? Mm-hmm.
Can't take anything too heavy because.
Yes.
Are you taking pails also?
Yes.
We chose the smaller giveaways just so people aren't loaded with things walking away.
They're going to be parking a long ways away.
Exactly.
Now, I, I, I'm, I'm even past the over 40 crowd. So this question. So TikTok, we don't use TikTok because it's more of a, it's really a social thing, right? And they're the ones that are advertising on TV. They're, they're really defending themselves on TV.
Yeah.
That's because of China and, okay. And that's what my grandkids dance on and do that.
That's what I'm suggesting, our GM.
Yeah. I think he's over 40. Good presentation. Thank you, Angela. That, uh, education from Cal State Fullerton really showing. The Titans.
Go Titans.
Forty-niner.
Oh.
Forty-niner, she's not a Titan.
You don't care about Kelsey. Well, actually you have your under, your under degree from Long Beach, right? Well, the one thing that Long Beach taught you was that you needed to go to Cal State Fullerton. Okay. Um, you know, when Art and I went there, they used to have elephant races at Cal State Fullerton.
Wow.
That's right. I was there, there's only four buildings.
A lot, a lot of orange trees, so.
He had orange trees in the parking lot. He did. Okay, enough of this. Those are all the items and the oral communications and director comments, say it from anybody. Um, I just, oh, Bob, I, Bob, did you have any comments?
Well, maybe a couple of questions. Have, have we considered, um, giving, um, doing some outreach, uh, you know, videos and or from these various platforms for uh, what, what David is engaged in, um, you know, carts in public view. That probably not necessarily as important as, as, uh, the, um, 1383 stuff. But, uh, you know, David is a full-time employee and, um, if he's getting, if he's getting 200, um, observations or carts in public view. You know, is there some way that any of this public, any, any of this, these platforms can help that?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, we can make. Add it to the SB 323 enforcement since it's going to be a big issue next year.
Even carts in public view, I, I could see doing like a short video on the do's and don'ts.
Yeah.
What to do with your can. It's a good idea, Bob.
Thank you.
And, and also the, the city and Mesa have emergency, uh, huge emergency networks. So that, um, yeah, they, they can notify, I think, I, I suspect by email or maybe some other platforms, uh, you know, when there's an emergency. Can any of those two, um, well, I don't know if Mesa, you know, I don't know if either one of them, there's any liability in either one of them sharing that data, but, um, you know, we have a limited, we, we are starting to get a presence in the community and I think both the city and Mesa are way ahead of us. In the, in the ability to contact people, probably on the same platforms that we're doing, but, um, you know, more of my question is, um, you know, in emergencies, are, are we moving towards, uh, having one or both of their platforms? You know, so that when we have an emergency, we can contact people?
You know, our procedures for, thanks Gina. Yes, so we actually have access to the same systems that the city and Mesa and the whole county use. It's called Alert OC. Um, so it's like a reverse 911 system that we can utilize for emergencies.
So is it, is it by telephone then?
It's telephone and email. Basically anything that people subscribe with is how they'll be contacted.
Okay, okay. So we do have access to the same kinds of, um, we, we have the same ability to contact people as, as those two agencies.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Art, a question from Scott. Okay, are we looking at changing our ordinance with the trash cans in view?
Yes, yes, that was requested by the board. So we'll, we'll, I don't know, I don't know if it's in for tomorrow's reading, but if it isn't, let's, that's a good time to, to talk about it. It was nice meeting.
I know we're probably going to have to do that.
Yes, yes, definitely.
Especially getting a couple of extra cans, extra cans, it's going to get some people can't still be keeping.
I think the city has, the city has the same ordinance. Are, are the two ordinances with the city and with sanitary district or trash carts in public view that similar?
I don't know. We'll have to look into that.
Yeah, okay, thanks. I'm, I'm pretty sure they also have that same ordinance.
One other question. Have we looked at the Costa Mesa Minute that they play? And so, or do, have we put any of it on there yet?
We used Costa Mesa quite, quite a bit, yes.
Yeah.
They do that both in English and Spanish, I believe, right? Yeah. All right, um, the only comment I had was thank you to Scott and Bob and Arlene for going to OC SAN last week and recognizing former Director Ferryman. It was.
Oh, yeah, it was fun.
That, and we, we appreciate that.
Mark Esker was there too.
Was Mark there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you all for participating. That means a lot. And I know, I know how much Jim appreciates it. So thank you. Okay, uh, if there are no other comments, then I will adjourn us this morning. And, uh, just a reminder that we'll be here tomorrow at six.